Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight. I am Michelle Fernandez of the League of Women Voters, San Jose, Santa Clara. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. I would like to introduce our moderator for this forum, Mary Ann Hagerty.
Thank you, Michelle, and good evening, everyone. The forum this evening is for Santa Clara City Council number six. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all signed. I agreed to participate under the guidelines set for this forum. Any campaign literature or any forms of campaigning such as buttons, T-shirts, signs are not permitted. We are videotaping tonight's forum and the session will be available throughout our website and on social media for the broader community to access. You can find the leagues, excuse me, you can find the links on our website. There are three candidates running for this position. George Guerra, Kelly Cox, and Anthony Becker. Kelly Cox is not with us this evening. These are the ground rules. Let's go over a few of them. Each candidate will have a one-minute time for opening remarks. Closing remarks will be 90 seconds. The timekeeper, who is Curtis Johnson, Curtis? Are you there? Is it will be keeping time for this on an automatic timer that counts down. The questions have been screened to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. The order of answering the questions will alternate and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Please note, all questions may be, all questions may not be asked. Some that are similar will be combined. Following the questions, each candidate will have 90 seconds for a closing statement in reverse order from the opening. Now let us begin with our first candidate. And I'll just go in alphabetical order to start and I'll start with Mr. Becker. Is he there? Mr. Becker, you have one minute for an opening statement. Your microphone, Mr. Becker.
My apologies, sorry about that. Hi there, everyone. My name is Anthony Becker. I am your council member for here in District Six in the city of Santa Clara. I'm running for reelection. In the last four years, we've reduced our deficit, ended the costly litigation, replenished reserves, increased our library hours, enacted a downtown precise plan, enhanced our stadium operations, approved some affordable housing, and in the process, updated our business license tax. I go door-to-door to seek your vote because I want to continue to make your priorities mine. This is your city, your city council, and I'm your city council member. I want to continue to be your dedicated public servant by serving the people and only the people. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve as your representative on the city council and I respectfully ask for your vote. I hope to see you when I'm at your door and I hope that you vote by November 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Guerra?
Well, good evening. My name is George Guerra. I'm a 57-year-old, a 57-year resident of Santa Clara. I have lived in this city, gone to school, worked in the city, and married my beautiful wife and raised two great kids in the city of Santa Clara. The kind of four things that I want to focus on is things that affect citizens, which would be modernization of our infrastructure, enhancement of our police and fire department, transformation of our downtown area. And then finally, common sense, which be if Measure I is passed, to spend the dollars wisely of our citizens of Santa Clara. So those are the four pillars that I wanted to focus in on. And I hope that we get to discuss that a little bit more with the citizens of Santa Clara. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Well, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Guerra, for our first question, okay? So, the U.S. Post Office on Kylie is woefully inadequate to serve a number of people in this area. It used to have parking in the back of the building before the COVID shutdown. Now at busy periods, cars waiting to get in the parking lot block Kylie Boulevard. Is there any way that the city government could push for an adequate facility in the southwest part of the city?
Well, I think that area, it'd be very interesting to see where we could either relocate that again with the downtown enhancement plan. If we need to keep that post office there, we would probably try to build more parking area to allow. I know there's a drop, you know, drop-off spot where you can drive through and drop off your mail. But I would hope that if we, again, develop our downtown area, one of the things that we focus in on is how do we get more parking down in that area to allow our citizens to use that post office and hopefully the downtown in a greater area.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
To confirm, this is the post office on Kylie, you said?
Right, right.
Okay, so the post office on Kylie, that is District Four. And it's actually been a concern, not only of mine, when I used to live in District Four years ago when I was younger. If you look at the development that was built over there on the old Kaiser Lot, I used to go to council meetings in the past in 2008 and so on, pushing for a possibility of splitting some of a park as well as putting a new post office that had easier accessibility off of Kaiser Drive. That fell on deaf ears to a city council in 2008 and I know council member Park at the time, who is the District Four council member now, was very adamant about developing this area in the proper way. But when it comes to that parking issue, I know that was a big issue after 9/11. They stopped allowing people to park from behind. Getting a post office in the southern part of our city in District Six is a little challenging, but I think as a community and as a city council, we will be able to work with the post office and trying to accommodate some of these issues because I know in District Four, that is a very big issue for that post office and I want to help accomplish that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Becker, I'll start with you for the next question. Mr. Guerra mentioned Measure I. So Measure I on the ballot would provide bond funding for city maintenance, often considered to be routine operating expenses. What changes in the city budgeting and management is needed to adequately fund maintenance in the cities, in the city's infrastructure?
Sure, absolutely. First off, I'm a big supporter of Measure I. I voted to put that on the November ballot. And the reason why is because Santa Clara comes first. I was pushing since I first ran for city council and successfully in 2016 and elections after that. I, all the time, was pushing for an infrastructure bond measure. In 2022, I wanted to see the infrastructure bond measure with the business license tax. We were unsuccessful getting the bond measure on the 22 ballot, but we're successful this year and I asked Santa Clarins to please support Measure I. Now, when you ask about how we have funding, well, a lot of it comes down to we're, we're bleeding a lot of money into very high salaries, bleeding 51.4% of our, of our budget into public safety compared to what other cities are spending on their public safety. So when it comes to our infrastructure, now we know why we're in a $600 million hole for our infrastructure is because we were irresponsible with our money from the past. Now we have a city council that is more responsible, more accurate, and now we're focusing on the future, which is the infrastructure bond Measure I.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Guerra?
Yeah, I am also a big believer in Measure I. To me, it's going to bring, as I said, modernization to the city of Santa Clara. It's going to upgrade things that now currently have fencing and really blight around them. So you take a look at the Santa Clara Swim Center. That's something that we want to get done. We want to get reopened as quickly as we can. So hopefully that will be part of that. I know it will be. Again, in police and fire, need to upgrade our firehouses because they're in bad shape, along with some of the fire training needs that have to go on. So Measure I is a key component of modernizing the city. The city basically was built in the 60s, so if we get that passed, I hope a vote for me is a vote for Measure I and hopefully the modernization of the city of Santa Clara.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Guerra, with you first again. An ongoing question. What is the, what do you feel is the appropriate relationship between Santa Clara City Offices and the management of 49ers? What standards will you personally observe in maintaining this relationship?
Well, I think it, I bring a different perspective from my background in business. I think there has to be discussions going on with any city, between the city and our biggest job providers, or let's say it's Nvidia or the 49ers. I think there has to be an ongoing discussion with those and making sure that we work together instead of against each other. I'm very hopeful that the new council and what I could do is bring my background. I've worked in telecom, so I've worked with other telecom carriers. And I know that if you present yourself in a manner, a business code of conduct you do, that you will be able to work together on issues and come up with solutions that will benefit the whole city of Santa Clara and our citizens. I pledge to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, thank you. So George, I think, really hit the nail on the head on that one. I mean, it's about collaborations, about communications, about working together. And you know, when I first got elected to city council in 2020, that was one of my biggest items was the stadium relations. Our, our city was not even communicating with the 49ers. Our city staff was letting lawyers communicate with the 49ers. 49ers would only let their lawyers communicate with their city staff. It was a divisive relationship for a 40-year marriage and we cannot have that happen for a stadium that is funded by taxpayers and protected by Measure J. We have to have a stadium that works and since I was elected, we have made a stadium that worked. We enhanced the stadium operations by removing the curfew up to five times a year to bring acts like Taylor Swift, Beyonce, The Rolling Stones, acts that said they would never come back here. We made a lot of changes that, you know, including in management, as well as the 49ers made changes in management because it was about making the city of Santa Clara successful.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. I'm going to have you start with the next question. Our city library system is not yet back to pre-COVID hours. Having the city libraries closed on Sundays and evenings, they currently are closed at 7:00 PM, is a real disservice to our citizens and students. When will full financing be restored to our libraries?
That's the excellent question of the year for a lot of candidates in Santa Clara is about the library hours. I know that since I was elected on the city council, we had, before I, you know, before I was elected, the pandemic, you know, had its issues and it involved the libraries, the hours were reduced. What we did was we have enhanced and increased those hours, yet it's not fully open yet. I agree, Sunday it's not open. It is a disgrace that our city libraries are being cut back because of past mistakes and budget issues. What it's going to take is also passing Measure I, focusing on our quality of life and also focusing on taking some of our money that we're getting from revenue streams and putting it back into the community like the library hours. This has been, it is still on the top of my priorities for the next four years, increasing our library hours and fulfilling full library hours because at the end, Santa Clarins' quality of life suffers when you don't have the libraries open. And I've seen that since the pandemic. And that is something that we've been making progress on in the last four years and I hope to accomplish that in the next four.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra.
Yeah, so I think one of the things, one of my fourth pillar was common sense. And common sense means having the libraries open for our young students, for our elderly, making sure that they have a place to go. And so that needs to be a budget item that we would look at immediately of how we get libraries open on Sunday and maybe extending the hours a little bit more so we can make sure that the students who need to, you know, to study, have the internet, need to make sure that they get that. Also, our senior citizens, making sure that they have a place to go if they want to read a book, get a book, take a class. Those are the type of things when I talk about common sense is that we should appropriate to get that library open, not only on Sundays, but maybe extended on the weekdays.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Guerra. If you were to describe your city council area considering population, distribution, cultural characteristics, and economic concerns, how would you describe your district?
Well, I think our district, District Six is made up of very interesting, we've, our one boundary is Stevens Creek where you have Otto Row, which is one of our boundaries. And then you have Homestead, a little bit of home, not as much as Homestead, but where, and then to the left or to the, to the east is Cupertino where you have Apple. So one of the big challenges, of course, is always going to be traffic for our neighborhoods in District Six and making sure that we're not overwhelmed with traffic. But additionally to that, we need to make sure that we are building affordable housing in our area and making sure that we have two new projects, I believe, going in. One of the former St. Mark's area and then another one in Prunridge. So hopefully we can build affordable housing at those two locations, but also try to manage our traffic because I think our traffic is always a concern for District Six.
Mr. Becker?
Sorry about that. Yeah, absolutely. Traffic is the biggest concern, I think, in District Six. I'll agree with George on that. But for our district and what it's made up of, our district is pretty vast. It's one of the biggest districts in the city, has the most houses. I know that because I'm walking a lot of the houses right now. There's too many. At the same time, our boundaries are from the Apple Campus to Valley Fair. Stevens Creek is our connector. You have Prunridge, which is a connector, as well as a little bit of Homestead across from Central Park, right behind Stan's Donuts. And our district is what I'd call park-friendly. We have a lot of great parks in our community. We have to enhance a lot of those parks. I know that Henry Schmidt Park is on the line to be fixed. But coming down to traffic, yeah, that's the biggest issue that I'm actually focusing on right now on the Stevens Creek Steering Committee. Where we're looking at creating a collaborative vision between the city of Santa Clara, Cupertino, and San Jose. And I want to continue to help provide that vision on Santa Clara's part.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Becker. Is there any way to improve communications between the city and the citizens of Santa Clara? What do you consider the best way for the city council to communicate information to its citizens?
Absolutely. You know, when I was first elected, Santa Clara didn't really have a way for their district council members to communicate with, with the public. Since I was elected on council, I've made a lot of these different reforms, which is including focusing on newspapers, sorry, newspapers, newsletters that I send out every month and it's put onto the city's website. We are now in the process of trying to assign district newsletter email. So like, for example, district6@senaclaracity.gov or something, for example. So then if myself, George, or whoever's lucky to have this seat in the future, they will be able to transfer that email title to that council member and they can utilize it. At the same time, we've made, making some adjustments to proclamations, to proclamations and how council members can speak at events. So then that council member that represents that district can have more direct democracy to their constituents and actually connect to them. And that's one of the biggest steps we've made in the last four years and I hope to continue that in the next four.
Thank you. Mr. Guerra?
Well, I'm happy to hear that Anthony was saying about getting that website to make sure you communicate directly with the citizens in District Six, which I think would be great. Additionally, I, I think I like having also maybe once a month or once every other month, meetings directly. Maybe have it at a park, use that facility to have folks come in and, you know, explain what their concerns are. But I think talking to the people directly, especially when I've been walking, I think that's kind of the biggest thing is that they want to see somebody in person so that they can go up to them, kind of get a feel with them of, and explain to them what their concerns are and let the council member hear you, hear them on what their, on what their concerns are. So I think, I think email, I think sending out a notice would be great, but I also think the, you know, the getting it in face of the citizens is also a big, big step.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. All right, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Guerra, for the next question. What services to our citizens do you think are in need of updating or reworking? Why is each in need of a change and how would you prioritize these?
Well, I think, I think one of the things that we have to see, I have not seen so much, I'll call it blight, meaning fencing and boarded up buildings in the city of Santa Clara. I have never seen any of that. So I think somebody who goes in and does a, if we don't have an economic development person, we need to do that. A small business economic development person who is focusing in on getting some of these things open and developing these areas so that the citizens know that we're working on things. I think too much is maybe even updating our website. If Measure I passes, one of the things we have to clearly communicate with them is what are the projects we are starting on? Whether it be the swim center, whether it be firehouses, and clearly communicate to our citizens how much money we're spending on each project so they know all along the way when we're going to start and when we're going to finish and how much money we're spending.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I'm going to try to fit all this in in a minute as fast as I can, but George is 100% right about blight. Blight is a major issue that I've been trying to establish with our city management and how we can come out, how we can fix it. It's a very major black eye to the city. And I've been pushing behind the scenes for a blight policy and trying to get businesses or places that have been sitting there empty for 10 years on El Camino Real. That's devastating and that's a disgrace to Santa Clara. We should be doing something with that land. It should be developed immediately. The other thing is, I would say, the data centers that we have being built around here, we need to have a discussion with our planning commission, a data center discussion about what we want to do with data centers, time and place. And that should be a policy. I've had some pushback against that from staff, but it's something that I think the people should have a discussion about. And one thing that isn't what the city offers, but the city should be offering, is working about internet equity because it's really crazy that Xfinity has a monopoly over this area and it's hard when students and old people and seniors and others are trying to have a way to connect to the internet. It's not fair and that's one of my next priorities.
Thank you. Mr. Becker. There's, there keep being plans to revitalize the old downtown area of Santa Clara, meaning the area around the old central post office, Monroe and Homestead and Jackson. Do you agree that the area is the center of Santa Clara and should be revitalized? If so, what is your reasoning? If not, does Santa Clara have a center? If so, where?
So yeah, so I guess, you know, Santa Clara does have a heart and that is the downtown. Unfortunately, it was devastated and destroyed almost 60-some years ago. And unfortunately, I never had control over those decisions. Me, I was growing up, growing up with no downtown. In fact, when I first was running for city council in 2016, I campaigned on returning a downtown and since 2016 and every election since, I've campaigned progressively on a new downtown. And, and the biggest thing I did, which was on the city council, I was the one vote that initiated and made the motion to enact the downtown precise plan, which was the very first step of doing it. Now what we have to do is get shovels in the ground. I know there's a lot of concern with economic times, but we got to find things that the city can actually make money on because this is an economic hub. It is a downtown core. Again, we have to have shovels in the ground immediately and I think we can do that in the next four years. But it's something I've been pushing for and passionate about for almost 10 years and I think we've gotten to the one point, but we can go a little further.
Thank you. Mr. Guerra?
Yeah, this is one of my pillars, which was to transform the downtown area. I remember Wilson's Bakery, walking into Wilson's Bakery with all the cupcakes lined up and all the cakes and it was great to go on a Saturday downtown to Wilson's Bakery. It was wonderful. I think we have to look at a partnership between getting small business there. I agree with Anthony that we need to get shovels in the ground right away. We have to also have a partnership with Santa Clara University because we have customers that are at Santa Clara University year-round, right? Those kids who may want to go get a coffee, the kids may want to go get a tea or sandwich in between classes. We have to work collaboratively and then open it up to have retail and restaurants. Why do we always have to go to Santana Row or to Campbell for a night out or listen to live music? Let's keep it here in Santa Clara in our downtown area.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Guerra, how do you feel about the working relationship now between the city and the Santa Clara Unified School District? Do you need, do you think it needs to be changed or improved? Or is it copacetic the way it is now?
Yeah, I think, I think anytime a relationship, you always can do better, right? You can always talk more or have more ideas going back and forth. I think the Santa Clara Unified School District does a great job in educating our kids. And so I just like to make sure that we are going on the same page as we do with modernization of our city, working with them to make sure that we are kind of working together a little bit more. But again, they do, their teachers, their principals, they do a great job at educating the kids in Santa Clara so that, you know, we have to continue that and we can continue to have the discussions around what we can do better in enhancing cooperation between the two and making sure it's working for the, not only for the citizens, but also for the students in Santa Clara and Santa Clara Unified.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so, you know, I think the relationship is pretty good. It could be a lot better. But one thing that District Six has, it's really unique compared to all the other districts in the city of Santa Clara. District Six actually has four school districts in it. The rest of the city of Santa Clara has one school district, which is Santa Clara Unified School District. We have four of them and that's working collaboratively with four different school districts in the district. I know in this one part of our district where Eisenhower is, I think that's Cupertino School District, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm correct. But one thing I will do is I'm going to, you know, olive branch, should George or Kelly be successful in this role, I will connect them to these four school districts. So then they understand that relationship on top of Santa Clara Unified School District, which is primarily what takes up the city of Santa Clara. But we do have those other ones and I think we can make them a little more, a better relationship. I know it's a little tough in Cupertino and I think Campbell Union, but I really want to make sure that we have those relationships the next four years. And should I be successful or George or Kelly, I want to make sure I introduce them to those school districts as well.
Thank you. Mr. Becker, speaking of students, the Santa Clara has moved to charge local nonprofit youth sports groups. They, they moved to charge them to play. How do you feel about that? Did you support that?
Yeah, so this is something that's still being discussed on the city council. I don't know how far I can go and designated my support, but I have said it before. We shouldn't be charging kids all this money to play sports. I mean, it's $115,000 a year in the city's budget. That's small. That's a small piece of the pie. And I don't believe in that, but again, we do have this, I think, matter coming back before the city council pretty soon. I think it's, you know, it was when you hear me on the city council meetings talking about we shouldn't have kids go through this. Yes, I reconsidered it before because staff gave me a lot of information that was really concerning, that would have put the city in jeopardy. But looking at more details and hearing more from the community, $115,000 or $114,000 is not a lot of money in the long run, especially when it comes to kids. I grew up in this community. When I was young, I always had the abilities to play some of the sports around here. But you know, at the same time, some kids can't afford to do it and it shouldn't have that ability to hinder their ability to go play sports.
Thank you. Mr. Guerra?
Yeah, I totally agree. I, I think that whatever we can do to lessen the cost to the kids to participate in sports, I think studies have shown that when you're active and you're participating in a team sport, it just, it gives you, you're just more well-rounded and you just thrive at it. Not only do you build, you know, things with your teammates, but you just learn different lessons along the way. I think this is one of the things that we have to look at to make sure that we're not, as Anthony said, $100,000 or $114,000 is not, not a lot of money. We should invest. I know when I was at Parks and Rec, we had a fund called the Wade Brummel Fund where we would subsidize some for sport, sports to play, football, basketball, soccer, to kids, low-income kids who just could not pay for any of that. to kids, uh low-income kids who just could not pay for any of that. So maybe increasing the Wade Brummel Fund, but also looking at different ways to help the get out of the pain that that exorbitant amount fee.
Thank you. Thank you both. Um, Mr. Gera. Are there any types of businesses or services that are lacking in Santa Clara that you would like to see come to the city? What are they and how would the city encourage them to come?
Well, a- as I talked about, I think when we look at downtown, um, I think we're having a very hard time attracting small business. Um, I think that small businesses are not starting up for whatever reason. I don't know if that's because we just need an um a small business administrator or economic development person to come in and speak to that, but it is glaring than that. If you go up and down El Camino, like I said, the blight and the the fencing and all the the you know, we used to have restaurants in the city of Santa Clara like La Paloma, uh By the Bucket, um, uh, Mondo Burrito, all these are gone. They're gone. Um, my friend Michael Fiorillo just closed his restaurant Fiorillo's, uh, but it's, we've got to get small business back because it drives revenue and we definitely going to need that. So small business, yes.
Mr. Becker.
Yeah, I agree with what George was saying. I just don't want to repeat everything George said, but that that is the biggest concern of mine is losing all these small businesses. But one that, you know, I was trying to elaborate on a little bit and I was rushing to try to say as much as I can, which is about internet equity in the in the City of Santa Clara. Uh, you know, Comcast or Xfinity, they're charging people a hundred dollars a pop for internet. I don't know how many people can afford that and the internet isn't always the best quality. Some of the infrastructure on these facilities, like Comcast told me when I lived at an old apartment complex, oh, that's the apartments, the responsibility to fix all those wires. No, that's Xfinity. That's Comcast's responsibility to fix that. We are the center of what's possible. That is our tagline and to have the internet inequity in our city. When you have students that need it to to have internet for access, seniors that need access to the internet for doctor's appointments and so on. Um, you need it for looking for a job. You needed to go to school. So we need to find a way to partner with some uh entity here in the City of Santa Clara, some business that really wants to go big and far and creating internet for everybody at a very equitable price or even for free.
Thank you. Um, well, Mr. Becker, if you had visitors from somewhere outside California and wanted to show them the real Santa Clara, what would be your itinerary and what points would you highlight in your city?
Oh, wow, that's that's a good one. Um, I would say take them to Great America, take them on a couple of roller coasters, have a few thrills there. Uh, take them to, you know, Levi's Stadium. Hopefully Taylor Swift or the Rolling Stones would be playing there. Uh, you know, uh, take them to our convention center where we have some of the best events that can go on at our our convention center. Um, take them all to our beautiful parks. I mean, and then you look at our neighborhoods, look how clean our streets are compared to the other cities around here. One thing my dad always said about this community is it was squared away. And that is one thing I agree on. Our community is pretty squared away. We're pretty clean. Uh, so those are probably some of the big areas I would take them. Uh, as well as I would take them to uh uh anywhere from the Mission to Santa Clara University. Give them a little history lesson as well. Uh, take them to City Hall. They could check out the areas of the retro nineteen sixties style that was built. Uh, as well as our famous little statue called the Universal uh Child, which looks like a missile in front of uh City Hall, but it's a beautifully landmark.
Thank you. Mr. Gera.
I think I'd start at Santa Clara U and walk them through the campus and get the feel of all the the young kids going there and and all the different diversity that we have uh there at Santa Clara U. And also to the mission uh and give them history of 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 how we started in Santa Clara. Um, then, as Anthony said, probably then take them to a bite to eat at Mia Vecino, a great Italian spot there in downtown area. And then maybe work your way up to Santa Clara Square, where we have some um nice restaurants. Uh, the convention center, if something's happening there, give them a little tour of that. Um, and then in District Six, come down. Um, El Amigo Burrito is a great spot in uh Santa Clara in District Six, so that's a good place to go. Uh, and then if by chance there is a a great uh uh happening at Levi's Stadium, you show them that and show uh and show them uh that area in in the north side.
Thank you both. Um, both of you talked about El Camino. Um, that that highway cuts right through Santa Clara. And so what is your vision of what this passageway or business area should look like? Is the, do you have any plans or any ideas of how to change this or promote business in the area?
Is it my turn?
Yes, Mr. Gera, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I I think we've talked about all the fencing there. I think one of the good things to do is that we look at the old Marvin Shopping Center, what we've done there in rebuilding that facility. Now we can do that, say, at Moon at the Moonlight Theater. I mean, I've I'm old enough to know that there used to be a Cinema one fifty there, uh theaters there uh at at Moonlight. And so we need, and then we took out the the bowling alley and put some housing there, which is great. But we've kind of left certain pockets of El Camino either undeveloped and we need to do that. So I would say if we can get to Moonlight and start revitalizing that, I think that's a key thing. And then build some additional um housing, uh maybe some affordable housing, but you have to put the retail with it. You have to put the grocery store with it because you can't just have people and then not have a grocery store. So that's my vision there for for El Camino.
Mr. Becker.
Yeah, uh, El Camino, yeah, it's a historic Boulevard. Uh, I'm glad uh George brought up about Cinema one fifty. That's where I watched Dances with Wolves when I was a kid, probably one of the last movies I ever see there and when they tore it down. Um, I remember the bowling alley. I remember everything, like Santa Clara slowly is dying, some of it, losing and dying some of its identity. Um, and we got to bring that back. I remember I used to go on to De Chico's on El Camino Real and the guy used to be in there and he used to play the piano while you ate dinner. That doesn't happen anymore. We need to start getting some kind of restaurants like that back on the Boulevard. Uh, um, and one of the biggest things I see is it's a transportation corridor. Uh, perfect for all types of transportation. It's an economic driver. We should see more small businesses down there. And one of my key things that I always keep talking about is establishing a Koreatown. It is the area that has been forgotten. We are losing a lot of small businesses that are Korean owner, Korean owned. Uh, we need to establish a Koreatown and make it so unique and iconic that the designs bring everybody from all around to come to Koreatown in the City of Santa Clara on El Camino Real.
Thank you. Well, um, I know you you have a city council meeting tonight, so I'm going to ask you one last question before the final. And I'll start with Mr. Becker. If a genie appeared and gave you one wish for you to better our city and that wish can't be that you win the election, what would that wish be?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of wishes I would have, and I know that most genies, you get three wishes. So I would want three, but one of the biggest ones I would say that stands out for me is when I walk and see the quality of life in our community, not only for the unhoused, but the people that are living with people, living on the streets that are unhoused. I want to house people. I want to make sure people are getting the best quality life they can. When my aunt was sleeping on the on the streets with her three children in a motorhome, that scared me. When my other aunt was homeless and they found her face down on the street and put her into intensive care, that is heartbreaking. That is not quality of life. Uh, we need to find a way to put quality life on people and getting them off the streets. Councilmember Parker and I, we've done tours of the of the creeks. We have met people who are living in the creeks uh that are homeless. They are sleeping in tents and then they go to work during the day, hoping that their stuff doesn't get taken. Again, not quality of life and it's not quality of life for our residents too to see this stuff. So let's build housing and let's make it happen for some of our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Gera. What would be your wish?
Mine's a little interesting because in in walking the city, dropping flies, I talked to a lot of residents about concerns in the neighborhood. And one of the things that kept coming up and up was that people were driving too fast in the neighborhoods. And if I had a genie, I would say, let's slow down the motorists in 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 our neighborhoods. Uh, I had one gentleman who was talking to my wife and he said, you know, I'm right near a park and the kids cross over on their bicycles and literally people are going so fast, the kids are going to get hit and just trying to cross over to get to a park. And he was saying that he would like to maybe have speed bumps to slow down the traffic, especially neighborhoods that have parks where kids have to cross. So I think one of the things that I would focus on for the genie to focus on is maybe trying to bring down the the rate of speed in our neighborhoods because I think that will end, that will be public safety for our for our citizens.
Thank you both. It's been very enjoyable to listen to your answers and um because we started with Mr. Becker, I'm going to end with Mr. Gera going first and I'm going to give you a little longer, Genie, I'll give you a little longer, a minute and a half, ninety seconds to give a closing.
Yeah, I I I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for for having us here. Um, one of the things that I take pride in is I've always been a positive individual, working in my community, um, helping where I can. Um, so one of the things that I am really pleased of is my work on the Parks and Rec Commission for eight years. We ended up doing twenty parks, uh new parks and redoing the old parks. Um, the last park that we did was the magic, we signed off on was the Magical Bridge Playground that we just opened. It was so wonderful to see all the kids enjoying that park. And I think and I hope that whoever wins, me, Anthony or Kelly, I will wish them the best. I will hope that they do everything they can to make Santa Clara a better spot for us. And I think one of the things we have to look for is just coming together, working as a group and putting differences aside because we're always going to have differences. But you have to have a positive attitude going forward to make sure you're working for the citizens of Santa Clara. And hopefully that's what I intend to do if I get elected, but then I also wish that for Anthony or Kelly if they win. And I, my heartfelt thing is to make sure that the citizens know that the council is working for them and that we're here to make sure that we are doing the the most we can to make sure that their life is a little better, that their kids' lives a little better, and that we're looking out for them. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Becker.
Yeah, thank you and thank you for having us tonight. Uh, since I was elected in twenty twenty by the people of Santa Clara's District Six, they entrusted me to shepherd our city through a very difficult time after the pandemic. Uh, your priorities were my priorities. You you spoke and I listened. Over the last four years with that traditional love uh guiding the city, uh, we've significantly reduced the deficits and the cost of litigation, pretty much everything I talked about in the very beginning. We have put those Santa Clarans quality of life issues first, investing in our parks, pools, public safety and lawn bowl clubhouse, restoring our library hours, uh enhancing our library hours, many other things. But as your council member and a lifelong Santa Claran, I've had a deep understanding of the fabric of our of our city. I've had the proven track record of accessibility where your input is always of utmost importance to me. I'll continue to serve only the best interests of all Santa Clarans and I will continue to be your voice in shaping our city's future. I'll continue to prioritize balancing our growth, affordable housing, supporting further infrastructure investments, development of our downtown, adjusting the issues around unhoused blight and keeping Santa Clara neighborhoods safe. We can't go backwards, only forwards. We can't go back to deficits, lawsuits or low quality of life. It has been an honor and privilege serving as your council member for District Six. In the next four years, I want to continue your, make your priorities mine and I'm going to respectfully ask for your vote and to agree with George. All of us who are running today, George, myself and Kelly, we all love this city and we have a different way of showing it. I hope the best for George and Kelly if they should be elected. And I hope that if I'm reelected, that we can work together and provide a better, safer Santa Clara that's going to be thriving for all and that we can work together in the future and hopefully they can be the next leaders of District Six. I want to thank everybody for attending tonight and your hosting and God bless everybody and thank you for uh Santa Clarans for being dedicated servants to the city.
Thank you both and good night and you'll have, okay.
Thank you.
You have time to get to your meeting now. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Have a good evening.
Michelle.
I want to thank the candidates for running for this office on behalf of the League of Women Voters, San Jose, Santa Clara. And for the their participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for being present to meet the candidates and proposing thoughtful questions. Members of the League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved with the men and women helping make it democracy work, it's easy to join the League. We encourage you to visit our website at L W V S J S C dot org. Please remember to go to vote four one one dot org for helpful information on the candidates and the propositions. Once you enter your address, your ballot information will be available. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register to vote. The last day to register was October twenty first, twenty twenty four. However, you can register at vote centers and vote up through November fifth using a provisional ballot. Remember to vote by mail or at the polls by November fifth and encourage your family, friends and neighbors to vote. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Michelle. Yay. Okay.